Happy New Year. This is our first Pearl City Neighborhood Board meeting, starting off the New Year, and we're very excited because with our legislators here tonight, they've got a long list of items that they're going to try to work. Some of those items are based off last year, the requirements that we put into writing with our resolutions on the needs for Pearl City. So, first of all, I want to talk about our rules for speaking, and if you don't want to come up on the microphone, anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list, Participants, and click on the raise hand. Those are the virtual group that are waiting as you see on the wall. And when recognized by myself, address comments to the Chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes, and please cancel the raise hand icon there when speaking. Presentations must be kept under ten minutes. The chat box can be used to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting, and the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on agenda can't be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for the public on our Google Drive. Okay, next step is here is our roll call. I know we have a few board members that couldn't make it tonight. Starting off, Kekuni Agard.
Here.
Rodney A. Wong. Charmaine Duran. Charmaine may be late. Guy Anoy. Brendan Lee's not here. Dion Mesta. And Dion Mesta is our secretary. I'll be, since my vice chair Charmaine Duran is not here, I'll be passing the gavel to him virtually tonight as I speak. Junior Mizzano, he's not here. Dan Smith. Nathan Taguchi. Tony Velasco.
Here.
And myself, Larry Vare. Okay, we have seven members. We have a quorum. All right, moving to our first agenda item, the Honolulu Fire Department. And gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening for having me on this route representing Wildfarts. Last month's December's. All of them. Ancient previously requested. Experience that particular December. Structure fires, one, fires, rubbish fires outside of structure or vehicle fires.
Can you speak louder? The virtual group is having a hard time hearing you.
Is that good?
Oh, good. You're good.
One structure fire, three nuisance fires, those include rubbish fires outside of structures or vehicle fires. Well, activated alarms with no fires. Wild land at cooking fires zero. And for emergencies, we had 162 medical homes, motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, one motor vehicle crash, eight mountain rescues, one ocean rescues, and hazardous material incidents, zero. The fire CT tips and announcements. Fire CT tip is lithium ion batteries. Lithium ion batteries supply power to many kinds of devices, including smartphones, laptops, e-scooters, e-bikes, e-cigarettes, toll alarms, toys, and even cars. Not used correctly, or if damaged, these batteries can catch on fire or explode. Always follow the manufacturer's instruction. Only use the battery and charging port designed for the device. Base ports that are damaged, brayed, or sticky to the touch. Charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation. Do not keep charging the device or device battery after it's fully charged. So after it's fully charged, disconnect, and then it starts to get low again. E-scooters and e-bikes should be only charged outdoors. Smaller devices should be on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging, never under your pillow, on your bed, or on the couch. Store batteries away from anything that can catch fire, so that flammable liquids or just paper, cardboard. That's all I have. Is there any questions?
Okay, board members, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Rodney?
Can you elaborate? SS. Could you elaborate on that vehicle collision with the pedestrian and where it was?
So the motor vehicle collision with the pedestrian, I do not have the location of that, but there was one in our geographical area.
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to see if that was in a crosswalk or out of a cross.
Try to see if I can get that.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Board members, any other questions? Community? Okay, and the issue that you brought up on the batteries, every family should understand how dangerous those batteries are, and especially when it comes time to switch out batteries in any of your devices. Normal thing is just go throw them in the trash can. Don't shouldn't throw them in there because if you got your Diet Coke or something else in there, that water will short it out if there's still power, and it'll start up fire. So that's a really good point to bring up, everybody. Okay, no other questions, and thank you. See you next month. Okay, Honolulu Police Department.
Good morning, Board. Can everybody hear me okay? We got you. Thank you. Hi, thank you. My name is Sergeant Clint Igay. I work out of the Pearl City Police Station, and tonight I'll be presenting you the stats for reported incidents for the month of December 2023. So as far as motor vehicle thefts, we had nine reported cases as compared to five in November. For burglary cases, we had six in December as compared to nine in November. For thefts, we had 27 reported thefts in December as compared to 37 in November. And for unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, we had eight reported in December as compared to eight in November. And as far as total calls for service services concerned, we had 5,730, 30 calls for service in December as compared to 5,535 calls for service in November. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? HPD? Looking for hands. I don't see any. Community? Nothing there, but I do have one issue I'd like to bring up. I don't know if there is a law right now, but you know, it really concerns me when I see individuals walk into department stores, any type of restaurants and things like that, and they're wearing a ski mask and with hoodies, that you don't know who they are that's coming into the store. And I don't know if there's a law on the books right now to state that, in my own opinion, COVID is over with, and I really think that we need to keep everybody honest, and that this is an advantage to the thieves that are out there, not to reveal who they are when they go into the store. And I really think that we should have some law. Do you know, Officer, if there's a law, and would you support any type of bill to state that individuals need to be without a face mask when they walk into a store?
Absolutely. I agree with you. I do believe it's a problem. Unfortunately, there's no criminal statute to enforce such an activity. I think my best suggestion for now would be to contact the business owner per se, let them know your concerns, and see if they can address it that way. At this point, that would be a civil matter and not a criminal matter, so it's nothing that HPD would be able to enforce.
Okay, well, that'll be on our items for the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to take on. I see no other questions, and I thank you for your input.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Hold on, one more.
Sure. No problem.
Might be useful to know that, to get a, don't need it now, but you know, breakdown of these thousands of calls that you get per month. Interesting to know what kinds of subjects are brought up, brought up, say, the top 10. Thank you.
Oh, I see. I think you'd like, just so that I understand you correctly, it would help you if you got a breakdown as far as what types of calls for service, maybe the top five or top 10 calls for service that were reported in district?
Yes, yes, I think that would be informative. Thank you.
Sure. I can tell you off the bat what a lot of calls for service we do get for is, we get a lot of alarm calls for residential, residential homes and commercial businesses. We get a lot of nuisance type calls that we respond to that don't necessarily entail any kind of particular crime, so they're documented under records type of, type of reports. There are motor vehicle collisions that we respond to. Those tend to be quite a lot, especially during the nighttime hours. Those are the top, top few calls that I can think of, in my experience, working patrol during the midnight hours.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, Sergeant Igay, I see no other hands raised. I think that's all we got, and thank you for your remarks.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, and my apology, when I started off with administrative comments and roll call, one thing I forgot was I needed to make one change to the agenda. It's minor. I need to move Hawaiian Electric Company for their presentation to after item seven, after government officials, because we have a controversial issue that's going to be brought up to the board, and I want to keep it nice and tight together. If there are no objections, I'd like to move the Hawaiian Electric Company to number seven. Any issues? See no issues, so we'll go ahead and move it. Okay, the next portion on the agenda is public testimony. This is an opportunity for the public to come to the board. You got issues, your neighborhood, things like that. You feel you've been wronged in any way, this is the time to bring it up to the board, and we also have our officials here. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up? Yes, please, and please identify yourself on the microphone.
Tom, I'm up in Palisades. I brought this issue last year with Charmaine Duran. I don't know if anything's been moving with this in regards to posting pigs crossing signs along Como Mai by the church, going down the valley and coming back up. I posted it on Facebook a few months back, and then a week after I posted, a pig got hit. So damaged somebody's car, somebody's going to be having, you know, a more expensive holiday than anticipated. So, you know, a concern is not only just the pigs, I love them, but you know, public safety and, you know, all that. So when I spoke with Charmaine, she said that she brought it up to the board, but I'm not sure what's going on with that, so I just want to make sure that that's addressed, and hopefully we can get some pigs crossing signs up there. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do have that for action. We were following it up, but you know, sometimes things are a slow pace, especially when you got to go make the sign. But Charmaine, our vice chair, has it for action. She's been communicating, and I'm trying to remember, because we had one thing done. There were two items that were brought up, but one got done, and I think this is the other one we still got to do. But you're absolutely right, it doesn't take much for a family to lose life because they're avoiding, you know, an animal on the road, and that's a bad turn that's happening. But thank you for bringing that up. Hey, any other items? Yes, please come on the microphone, address yourself.
Hi, my name is Christopher Mondo Lio. I'm a resident on Noalani Street, directly below City Island. I wanted to actually talk about the deny. Five, I don't know.
Just, you got three minutes to talk about your issue.
Yeah, so we recently had some claims denied from the city. You know, I'm a resident there. At the time, flooding waters came through in six. No, I actually wasn't home, but my parents are here today. They were actually, they came to the area, rushed there, my girlfriend, and the floods, kind of flooding water just.
Excuse me, can you come closer to the microphone because they can't hear you?
Okay. The flooding water just basically came through the house, and my girlfriend was updating me. She was in the house and was updating me as the water was coming through the house. I actually came home the next morning, and pretty much everything, there was a lot of destruction. My brand new vinyl fence was knocked down, the flooring in the off, in my home office was completely destroyed, and also two, both of my cars were basically wouldn't start. Water just came through the car. It was as high as like four feet on the street level, pretty much touching my mailbox. So that's just kind of the testimony of what happened during the flood. You know, some of my neighbors are here, they can also share testimony, but the idea is, you know, hopefully we can discuss what happened with, if there was any support for the flood victims and like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come on up. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Rayleigh Mondo Lio. I am Christopher's mom, and I don't think what you folks know is what we had to go through. Lena, Sostin, the exhaustion that we had to go through. Noalani Street is not a flood zone. The waters came up because there's drainage that were blocked, and everybody's blaming the state, the city. Well, the flood came through his house. It jumped through Moanaloa Freeway all the way down to Don Quixote. And what does the city say? We deny your claim. So I'm here. A lot of you folks doesn't know what we have to go through, and I'm here to let you guys know that, gosh, we need help. What happened to the homeowners on Noalani Street? It's been two years. Statute of limitations ran, and all what we heard was, I'm sorry, you had to go through that. Well, that is not acceptable. Do you agree with me, Board of Directors, Councilmen? That is not acceptable. We have a family who pays their property tax, their sewer line, their whatever, and the drains did not work. So I'm asking you folks to help the Noalani Street home residents, okay? He's not asking for 100,000. He's not asking for 500,000. He's not asking for a new house. What he submitted is less, a little bit over 20,000, not even putting everything that was broken. He's living today with a broken heater. He has four or five jobs. We got to show our next generation that our government is going to be there for us when we need them. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, and we're going to transition into board business because this is a serious matter that affected many Pearl City residents. I counted over 25 residents that were impacted by the flooding, not counting how many vehicles were flooded. But at this time, I'm going to go ahead and pass the gavel virtually over to my secretary, since my vice chair is here, because I want to, I want to talk a little bit about this and what I observed. So, Secretary, I'm passing over the gavel to you so I can speak on behalf of this issue. Okay, I put these PowerPoint slides together here because I want to just give you an idea of what the families had to go through. When I showed up on the scene, it was the day, pretty much the day after, the water had receded quite a bit. The city was great. They came out, they helped the families. What was really sad to see, brought tears to my eyes, was when they brought out all their furniture because it was ruined forever, and it was a dumpster that the city brought out, and everything went into that big dumpster, and they just kept hauling it away. But let's go to the next slide. This is a video. This is to give you an idea of how bad this was. This is shot from Chris, as Chris came up to talk about his yard. So take a look at this, and I'll just let you watch it. I'm going to point out one key thing that Rayleigh brought up. Imagine, you know, a nice quiet area, never had anything like this happen. There's Pearl City Elementary School in the back, okay? They had to evacuate the kids as soon as the water, if you notice in the background, there are gratings. The water is shooting up out of the gratings, flooding the property, flooding the classrooms. They had, they had almost a foot, two, two feet of water, and there's about, there's about six to seven storm drains on the, on the school grounds. Those were all shooting up because the water was not going through the storm drain like it should. And next slide. Okay, if you look at the area here, there's, you see the circle there that's up there? That's the grounds for the, for Peaches Elementary School. Then you have Noalani Street, then you have Moanaloa Road, and underneath that you've got, not Kalom, can't remember the name of the street, but another street. That water, with so much water, that was not being drained through the storm drains. It actually went over Moanaloa Road, and then it went into the next residential area, where that's where it hit a lot of houses. Not as bad as these six houses that are in that dashed line area. They took the brunt of it because water came up two to three feet. You know, your mailboxes are three feet off the ground. You could just barely see the mailboxes. Next slide. Okay, there's the school grounds. You can see off to the left top corner. Look at the water shooting down. It's supposed to be going the other way. Okay, see those containers? Those containers were positioned about 30 feet on the other side of where they're stopped right there. They all, they were floating, and if there wouldn't have been a wall there, it would have crashed into the homes. Next slide. Inside the homes, you could see the water level. So imagine throughout the whole house, your living room, your kitchen, everything that you had is destroyed, and plus all the, all the, the boards that they had to pull out. Next slide. Example of all the furniture and everything they had moved around from the flood. If you look at the cars up in top right, you'll see where the water came up, got into the doors. And with the one gentleman that I talked to last night, he had his Tesla. Lucky the batteries didn't explode. Next. And notice on the right there, there's, when the water was starting to recede, it was all mud. The city came in with their front end loader and scooped up all the mud, put it into the trucks, and all that mud went in people's living rooms and everywhere. Next slide. That's it. Anyway, I just want to, you know, show you what they had to go through, and of course, all this time they put in their claims. And our officials, great, our city council rep, our state senators, they all took time. That very, next day, they all came down, they observed all this, they talked to families, and also the families were given procedures and how to file their claims. The only issue was, some claims were provided, and I don't know, I don't have the timeline and all those when it came, but the one family that you just heard, it's pretty, pretty bad, with six days before the statute of limitations, you get a resolve from the city. And of course, the letter, let me just read this. This was in the claim, and this concerns me, and says, "In our decision to deny your claim, we considered various factors, including, but not limited to, the significant cone of low weather. This weather event brought about persistent and extended heavy rainfall, leading to flooding in multiple areas of the island. Additionally, we found that the Department of Facilities Maintenance cleared and maintained the Ho'omei ditch in November 21." That ditch has nothing to do with that sewer line that runs from the school down through. There's actually, on Noalani, there's two big gratings. The water was not moving down the gratings. There was no swirl to show that, and then when you go across Moanaloa Road to the next street, I interviewed the neighbors last night to, again, to review what happened. Those gratings did not show any water moving. So there, there had to be some blockage. But, but anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. And at this point, Secretary, can you pass the gavel to me? And the Pearl City Neighborhood Board has drafted a resolution. Can you please read this resolution for the public?
Of course, Mr. Chair. I just want to check the, my volume. Is that okay?
You're good.
All right, thank you. The resolution is requesting the mayor and the city council to act immediately to assist the Pearl City victims of the 2021 flooding disaster. Now, Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Whereas in December 2021, the state of Hawaii experienced heavy rain and flooding, and whereas in response to this weather event, the state of Hawaii, the city and county of Honolulu, and the Federal Emergency Management Act agency all issued disaster proclamations. And whereas according to the news coverage, Pearl City residences on Noalani Street suffered considerable damage, and at least two residents were rescued by the Honolulu Fire Department from rising waters and collapsing walls. And whereas on December 5, 2021, the city and county of Honolulu issued a press release about the disaster that read as follows: "The city and county of Honolulu's Department of Emergency Management has released two online forums for Oahu residents to self-support damage to their homes or businesses from the recent severe weather and flooding. The purpose of these forums is to collect information that will help county, state, and federal officials better understand the damage that occurred and impacts on our community. The city will also use gathered information to determine the needs in our community, additional response measures, as well as the type and extent of assistance that may be offered. Whereas in December 9, 2021, an additional city press release specified the following: 'The information collected will be used to determine if the extent of the damage is such the city is able to seek additional assistance for residents through federal disaster programs. Residents are advised to immediately photograph and report damages to their insurance company as soon as possible, as well as to the city's online reporting site listed below. Residents are urged to begin cleanup right away to avoid the development of mold and nobody, which can cause additional damages and health issues.' Whereas initially, the city provided minor debris removal along Noalani Street, but by the start of 2022, communications had diminished considerably. Whereas in April 2022, without access to flood recovery resources or lacking support from the city or state, Noalani Streets' residents filed claims with the city corporation council office citing a backed-up storm drain. And whereas after waiting for almost two years for a response or help from the city, the corporation council issued a denial of one such disaster claim in November 2023. And whereas in shockingly bad form, the city issued its denial of the claim just, just days before the statute of limitations was set." Whereas the city, whole city council is the ultimate authority on settlements with the city, and whereas the statute of limitations does not preclude the city from, one, assisting flood victims in securing aid, or two, negotiating settlements directly with victims outside of court. And whereas one of the central functions of city government is emergency response and recovery, thus resiliency, spending, and planning initiatives have increased tremendously within city and county of Honolulu. And whereas the whole city, home's pre-disaster mitigation plan is over 800 pages, a worry disaster recovery plan has not yet been finalized for the city. And whereas according to the city, the recovery plan will organize public and private activities so that individuals can build back better following a disaster. And whereas the devastating line of fires demonstrate the need for government to plan for and deliver systematic and expeditious assistance to all disaster victims like those of 2021, the 2021 flood, now therefore be resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board urgently requests that the mayor and the city council do the following. One, investigate the city's handling of claims filed by 2021 flood victims. Two, determine whether the city facilitated any state, federal, or private disaster aid for victims. Three, report on whether the city has applied for any federal aid for this disaster. Four, provide the board with a copy of the final disaster report, including storm drain maintenance schedules. Five, expedite the finalization of the city's disaster recovery plan, and be it finally resolved, the electronic copies of this resolution before the mayor, all members of the whole city council, and all 2021 flood victims on Noalani Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dion. Okay, board members, can I get a motion to approve this resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Tony?
Aye.
Rodney? Charmaine, did you make it? Nope. Guy?
Aye.
Dion?
Aye.
Dan? Nate? Tony?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That's seven ayes. Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Okay, moving on. The DCCA put out their report in regard to Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery. This was HCR 29. It was their study, potential solutions, and management plan for Sunset Memorial Park. And there is good news in it. And I'll pass the gavel back over to my secretary because I want to read this to you. This is what they said for solutions for the cemetery. "As an immediate solution to security and safety concerns, the DCCA proposes an amending HRS Chapter 662 Delta to permit the director of the DCCA to appoint a limited owner of the cemetery for which no owner can be found, and will authorize a limited owner to file complaints with appropriate law enforcement." to file complaints with appropriate law enforcement authorities against persons engaged in wrongful acts at the cemetery and install security measures to deter trespassers from entering the property. The legislative proposal has been appended to this report. And the good news is our legislators are taking action off of this and are gonna move forward to continue to help in every way that we can uh, redevelop Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery and make it a cemetery everybody will be proud of. Uh, we'll hear more about this from our legislators later on here. But I just wanted to give you that update. Uh, I'll go ahead and take the gavel back. Uh, moving on, the final environmental assessment for the Pearl City Library renovation commu- and Community Library Learning Center. Uh, that's on its way. That's good news for us as we continue to uh, uh, expand our library and the services to all our residents in Pearl City. And then lastly, for board business. Uh, Tony, you want to talk about the recognition for Manana lifeguards? I've got the certificates signed here, which I'll turn it over to you to uh, to recognize them.
Okay, uh, yeah, I have several uh, individuals to recognize. One is uh, the lifeguard manager for the Manana Neighborhood Park is Christopher Shucknick. I also have Christina Marie Ewan and Shaden Shimabakuro. I, I can share one of the um, hold on.
Could you please do that?
Yeah, I'll share. Just one of the slides for um, the manager, Christopher Shucknick. So lifeguards are vital to maintaining a safe and enjoyable swimming environment, often working conspicuously. Lifeguards prevent countless swimming accidents using nothing more than a low-key shake of the head or shake first of a whistle. Highly trained in rescue and CPR, day-to-day lifeguards stand ready to act and vigilantly watching over our most vulnerable residents, Akapuna and Keiki. Lifeguards are the unsung heroes of the city emergency and safety operation. Christopher Shucknick is one such hero. Since two thousand eight, he has worked as a lifeguard for the city and county of Honolulu, swimmers at Manana Pool, where he currently serves as a manager. Described him as a warm, irreplaceable and devoted professional. On behalf of our community, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board thanks you for your service and glad you awards the significant certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts. So I have another one, um, it's pretty, pretty much the same for uh, words, uh, but it's for Christopher Ewan.
Go ahead and uh, again, uh, to our lifeguards, we want to congratulate you. And most importantly, thank you for being there for our, our families and elderly in case that they were in need. I know you guys will be there to help them, but can I get a round of applause for our lifeguards?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Hey, you're welcome.
Okay, moving on on the agenda, government representative, monthly reports. First of all is Mayor Rick Blangieri's Representative Director, Jean Albano. Welcome.
Chair. Happy New Year, Chair. Committee members, neighborhood members and the mayor's highlights for January includes a brief welcome or just thank you to all the residents and what he is wishing for a healthy and happy twenty twenty four. In review of twenty twenty three, there was a graphic of some accomplishments of the various departments. And wanted to just highlight a few. Uh, the Department of Designing Construction spent roughly over two million dollars in emergency repairs. Design Department of Enterprise Services had close to half a million of golf rounds. Uh, DPR introduced uh, new pickleball courts. EFM filled close to thirteen thousand potholes. E and V collected over eight hundred tons of trash. And and this is just a few of the highlights. If you'd like more information, there is a hard copy or uh, you can view it online. There is a new off-leash dog park in Salt Lake. There was a award given to the Department of Information Technology for their efforts in creating a program that sorry. Helps manage roughly four million of the city's budget. Uh, I will move on to questions from last neighborhood board meeting. First one was regarding the fire station update. The fire department did come back with a response indicating that a portion of the Trinity United Methodist Church, which is located at the corner of Kova My Drive and Waimano Home Road, was identified as a viable option to relocate the Pearl City Fire Station. The HFD is working closely with DDC and land management to acquire the property. The infrastructure suitability phase was completed and the sewer electricity and water was confirmed as suitable for a fire station. Project is currently undergoing ESA. Subsequent to the assessment, the land subdivision would take approximately fourteen months to complete. And the purchase and the sale of property will take approximately three to six months. Estimated completion date to acquire the land is June of twenty twenty five. HFD has not expended any funds for this project, however, funding will be expended for the ESA. The new fire station will occupy a portion of the Trinity United Methodist Church, which has been agreed upon by the property owner. Second item was brought up regarding the development plan that needs to be tabled. There was no information from the respective department. Uh, next item was regarding the garbage truck safety concerns with the spikes on the tires. Uh, the department has not responded back to that query as well. The next one is the car registration kiosk issue. Can the city and or vendor of the kiosk provide a warning for printing malfunctions? Unfortunately, malfunctions such as this occasionally happens when the city is made aware that vendor is promptly notified and they dispatch a technician within twenty-four hours. If any errors are not rectified at that time, warnings can be posted or the site is taken down. Can the Pearl Beach Satellite City Hall be opened at nine AM for general public versus having appointment only services until the mall opened at ten AM? Fortunately, Pearl Beach Mall opens at ten in order to service customers beginning at nine. We did make a special arrangement, agreement with them to limit the nine to ten AM appointments only to escort the customers into the mall. If we fail to comply, they would revoke the special arrangement and we would be forced to open at ten. So that simply was a devotionation between the city and Pearl Beach Mall. Lastly, member Wong wanted ridership updates. Route fifty-three between uh, quarter three, so the last three months of twenty twenty-three. Route fifty-three had a thousand riders. Route fifty-four, twelve hundred. Route ninety, a hundred. Route five thirty-one, a hundred thirty. Route five thirty-two, two hundred and ten. And roughly, route five thirty-five, a hundred twenty. So that is my report and I will probably take some questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you gotta, sir, hold. Just hold. The board goes first. I didn't agree to it. Board members, any questions? Our director, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Albano, um, seeing as we have the residents of Noalani here tonight and uh, concerns, um, is there a possibility or a probability of having the Corporation Council come to one of our meetings and kind of explain to them what their, you know, options are?
So I did try to reach out to corporate council and unfortunately they were not available. Uh, I live up the street, so I'm really empathetic to the situation. My own daughter went through a similar situation uh, last December in Northern California. She lost her car and she was devastated with that. She was a, she just graduated from college, so I do feel very empathetic to your concerns. The Department of Facility Maintenance was there the following day to try and help uh, mitigate much of the flooding and human nature takes its course. Uh, we did our best to try and then percolate it as quickly as possible and we did also do some investigation as well. So when the timing is appropriate, we will uh, in collaboration with or disclose some of our findings.
That's good. I appreciate that. Because um, back in the sixties, this happened before. And what ended up happening a six-foot wall of water actually took out Footland Supermarket. And this was back when I was a young bin, this area was. So um, my other question. How many streams, facilities and maintenance match?
We do primarily all the streams on the city, I mean, you know, on the island of Oahu.
Right.
There are portions that are privately owned, managed by the state of Hawaii. But we, the city and county primarily does the maintenance of of the majority of the streams.
Yeah, because it, it, it seems to me like, uh, you know, I work in Campbell Industrial Park. And normally around December, January, February, we get the Kona winds coming in and the Kona rains. So we know what's coming. So I think it would be, you know, in good faith that at around November or December, you know, the city would be, you know, it will be the responsibility to start checking uh, the streams. Because this one was a little bit rocky.
Yeah, we, we actually go through uh, contingencies ahead of any potential storms. So we do have staff that actually go to the various streams to check the, the levels. And if there's a, a need to then unplug the sand plugs to allow uh, the water to flow into the ocean, we, we do that. There is EPA regulations, however, that doesn't prohibit, that prohibits us to, the city, to do it uh, unilaterally. The only time we can uh, do something is through emergency proclamations. And primarily it's when we, we recognize there is a potential of a natural disaster.
So is there any recourse for these residents to peek in these drains to let the city know that, hey, we got a clog over here and you guys got to take care of it?
I am unable at this time to respond to that.
If you could get that on the next meeting, that'd be great. Because, you know, you see the devastation. They're eyeballing me right now.
Yes.
Okay. Board members, any other questions?
Yes, please.
There's one there?
No doubt, that's, that's the board members.
Oh.
Guy, go ahead, Guy.
Yeah, uh, see, I'm Mr. Albano.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so I'm a Palisades resident and frequently look at the uh, street, the one down by the church next to Children's House. And lately, um, on the west, let's see, the east side of that bridge, uh, so as you go in up Palisades, being on the right side, as you're coming down, being on the left side, we notice a, quite a bit of uh, growth there, like uh, vegetative growth. And so I'm kind of concerned that uh, you know, if that growth falls inside, uh, it might clog that, that area. And uh, I think uh, I've been in Palisades for thirty-plus years and, you know, it, it, unfortunately has not uh, clogged yet. But, you know, if, if it does, I, I think, I forget how many years ago, somebody told me once, you know, the water did come over the road. I don't know how many years ago that, that was. But if you can um, let's see, get a report as to uh, how that the area is doing in terms of being cleared out underneath that bridge area. Because, you know, we don't, we want to be proactive, you know? Because it's only one way in, one way out.
Yeah, so in our website, we do have a stream maintenance schedule. If you'd like to know, but I can follow up as well in terms of when we do have a scheduled maintenance for that particular stream.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that would be really good if you have um, can I report back uh, versus uh, trying to wait for that report. It's kind of unnerving when uh, saw the water coming out from those um, uh, that horizontal drainage things, you know, popping up. I didn't know it was that bad.
And so those kinds of conditions, again, we do have visual observers that are monitoring those levels. And if there is a need to then water, we actually do.
Okay, so yeah, we look forward to a report next month. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Guy. And of course, uh, Representative Takayama helped out here back there with those uh, albezia trees, which would definitely clog up that stream. The residents, any questions?
This is a board.
Okay, Pam, could you please come up? Can't hear you.
I would just say this one, so if you, if you do want contact information, please, by all means, come and see me afterward.
Okay, datafye yourself.
My name is Denise Saki and I live on Noalani Street. Lasting containers that you saw was rest. But I have two questions. One is when they enter the manhole do you, do they do the confined space? First, the second is clearing of the ditch. I don't understand how the clearing of the ditch correlates to the flooding on Noalani Street. Because it was the culvert that runs between my house and Christopher's house that was fifty to a hundred feet blocked, one hundred percent, right? Right? But the blockage came, the state engineer their side, they went into the culvert. They took a picture for me and they showed that it is from Christopher's house and my house that the blockage. So the cleaning of the ditch.
Excuse me, can you come a little closer to the microphone?
The cleaning of the ditch upstream didn't help Christopher and I prevent the blockage in the culvert. So first of all, the confined space testing, do you do confined space testing before you enter the manhole? Whether it's a stormwater or sewer? And the second is what does cleaning of the ditch above the spool now have to do with the blockage between Christopher and my house on Noalani Street? Literally right on our properties. Right? It took the, your guys, by the way, they did a fantastic job. And Leroy did a great job, but it doesn't explain corporate councils' response to us in their denial. Because they're saying they did their preventative maintenance in November on the ditch. They should have did their preventative maintenance on the culvert. Because the culvert, one hundred percent blocked. The water coming from up here didn't have any place to go but to bubble up onto the spool and over into our properties. I know you understand, so, okay, I gotta let you in. I know you understand, so okay, I gotta let you in.
If he can.
I will try to respond. I would find out about the confinement testing. Responsibly with regards to that matter. Response to your second question. Yeah, that's why, yes. It's like the utility having to go into a manhole, right? Confinement, the culvert may be open on both ends, therefore it's not necessarily confinement. The manhole goes into the culvert. Right? So then there is my understanding, it's not technically confined because it does go into the culvert that is open. So with regards to not having proper air ventilation and whatnot, I I believe that's potentially the reason why there is no uh reason for confinement test, but I will follow up. That's the presumption, right? Yeah, uh, we have the same picture. Yes, absolutely. So with regards to the potential reason for the blockage, if you look at the vegetation of the blockage, it does appear that it is from uh vegetation that was cut that was not necessarily by the F M. And therefore, there might have been some potential uh other individuals that that is correct. Therefore, that's the reason why I'm being very cautious at this moment. And I want to have four with me to be able to respond to all of you uh much more uh with information and reason for the denial. But from a Department of Facility Maintenance standpoint, we and we surmise that potentially it was due to illegal cuttings of vegetation as well as trash that over time resulted in blockage. Yeah, so the grades were clear. But with yeah, so the only we could have potentially have assessed there was blockage was to literally go into the manhole at the time. And I I don't believe it would have been safe for anyone to have gone into that manhole to assess if the culvert was blocked. That is my best answer I can give from a facility maintenance standpoint at this time.
So Director Albano, would you support if the Pearl City Neighbor Board had a special meeting on this subject to bring the residents so you could bring your experts in to explain the situation?
Absolutely. So if if it's primarily to understand four's rationale in terms of the denial, then yes, please, by all means, have that resolution in place. Uh, I am with Department of Facility Maintenance, so I I would not be able to respond on their behalf. Yeah, so I have to understand the rationale further, further, yeah. They s- they stated a fact and they stated a fact, correct. They just simply stated a fact.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and cut it off right now because I I I truly believe there is other evidence with the residents. There's what she just said, it's, they have the videos. And what I'd like to do is have that special meeting, bring your experts in, and they can explain why water's going the opposite way in that circumstance, this situation, and also those grading.
It's because of water pressure. At some point, it's got to flow another way, so it went. But again, it's 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 nothing uh for us to further discuss at this time and we just have to get the additional individual that can explain the the reason for the denial.
Okay, well, we'll we'll let this take its course. We have a resolution with our requirement from the board because the community still needs uh their their questions answered and also they still feel they've been wronged in some ways. So we'll move forward and thank you for taking time because I know it's a contentious issue and you being a director, I know it's really tough.
No, I I am a resident as well, so it could happen to me.
That's the other good news.
And it did happen to my daughter. I I empathize, I empathize with.
Okay, you have a question? Sorry, taking care of any other questions? All right, Director Albano, thank you so much. You've been up a long time. Thank you. Okay, moving on, Councilmember Val Okimoto. Are you online?
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Aloha Chair, uh, members of the board, Eric Kamonu with Councilmember Okimoto's office. Uh, just a quick legislative update for everybody. Uh, tomorrow, the twenty fourth, the City Council will be meeting for full council. A few bills of note include Bill Three, which relates to incentives for the construction of affordable housing. Bill Fifty-nine, which relates to incentives for film studio facilities. And Bill Forty, which relates to the Construction Mitigation Fund. Uh, this is the fund that is supposed to assist folks whose businesses were or have been affected by the construction of the rail. Um, additionally, as some of you are aware, we are approaching budget season at the City Council. We have several of your board's requests uh that we received from the Chairman Vice Chair, um, including the dog park and several park maintenance requests. Um, additionally, we're going to be requesting funds for equipment, um, et cetera, for the Honolulu Fire Department after seeing the equipment difficulties that uh they faced during the Millani Malka fires, uh, things like uh bigger helicopters and um and 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 things like that. Uh, lastly, uh, thank you to all of our state senators and representatives who are starting the twenty twelve uh twenty twenty-four legislative session. Uh, we look forward to working with all of you folks for the next three or four months. Thank you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, any questions for for Councilmember Okimoto's staff? Virtual, any uh hands up? Seeing none? Questions from the audience?
Larry.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Kamonu, uh, so in light of these, uh, the plight of these Noilani residents, I hope that Ms. Okimoto will step forward and back them up under uh plight uh in any which way that she can uh because they deserve it.
Absolutely, sir. We have a meeting uh request with Corporation Council to sit down and talk with them coming up. Um, as you are aware, we were not in office during those floods, so it's something that we need to um we would like to see the whole picture before we make any big um announcements on anyone's behalf.
Okay, any questions from the community? Go ahead, microphone.
Aloha, thank you. I'm Tom, resident of Palisades, and I brought this up earlier in our earlier.
Pig signs.
Meeting. But in regards to um budgeting, I was hoping to have some funds for my pigs crossing sign. I would like.
You got it, brother. I I wrote it down when I heard it earlier. Uh, we're gonna try to get you those pig signs. If not, I'll go up there uh myself with some pig signs. I got some. I live in Kahului, so we get pig signs all over the place down here.
So it was moving along. Okay, uh, seeing no other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Eric, uh, moving on, we've got the Governor Greens, Representative Mr. Jeff Hickman here. Hello, Jeff.
Hello, Chairman, Board, Residents. Uh, there I had a lot of questions in the last meeting in November and I wanted to address those first. Um, Board Member Brandon Lee asked about what the governor was doing about the evictions on Maui. A lot of the questions were about Maui. And so I got from the governor's office, um, we'll talk to um Board Member Lee and see if he knows any specifics because they can be addressed by Maui County. We have that relationship. But without those specifics, we can say that the the governor mentioned some of the steps that he's been taking and he mentioned it during his State of the State. Uh, one is the five hundred million to expedite secure more stable housing to uh help those who are displaced. And second is the goal of the administration to give the priority and the sense of urgency to get people out of hotels. That's that's one of the missions, so. Um, I can email my response to uh Board Member Lee and I can follow up with him if he has any follow-ons on that. I had a a question from Board Member Rodney Wong and a resident online guy talking about the amphibious planes and the prop planes and the more assets that Hawaii can have to fight fires. And so I'm right now talking to the fire department. There's a lot of levels and the lower levels don't know anything, so we're trying to go higher. Um, so I'll get, I'll table that one. I'll get you an answer next meeting, sir. Uh, and you too, uh, Guy, if you're online. I had Board Member Charmaine Duran ask about is the state gonna make evacuation plans for those communities who are at risk of the wildfire? Uh, the state isn't making any plans right now, but our Hawaii Emergency Management Agency works with the Maui Emergency Management Agency. So right now, the plans are at the county level. Um, and I can say that things learned from the Maui wildfires in August to now will likely be applied to those mitigation plans. Because the AG's report is not out yet, it's not final, a lot of the after-action reviews and changes, um, they're waiting until they get their reports so they can make a whole bunch of changes at that time. But things that will be in there will be the standard operating procedures of the sirens, how the public should react. They'll make it very clear with the campaign on that. The public understanding of that plan and also understanding the red flag warnings. And if there is a mention of a fire and there's a red flag warning that to take it very seriously. Uh, because those those fires came quick. Um, right now, Maui Emergency Management Agency does have some FAQs about evacuation on their website. A lot of it has to do with tsunami. Um, but I'm sure they're gonna be adding fire on there after the AG's report comes out and they revamp all of their plans. The last thing I wanted to mention about that is Maui just hired a brand new director of MEMA and that person started January first, so. Lot of changes on Maui and a lot of information to come out soon. Um, that should hopefully save lives in the future. But and that's all I had to report. Is there any questions for the governor?
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions? Rodney?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Um, within the last couple of days, I thought I heard on a newscast that there were um states starting to put together some kind of a helicopter brigade to fight the wildfires.
Okay, I can roll that into the other question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That would be, that would be.
Okay, we do have the HFD as the firefighting, the National Guard has the buckets and we're lucky that the active duty uh when they're available and not deployed, they also help, so. Maybe they're talking about mobilizing them in a more organization. I can look into that, sir.
Okay, I see no other hands, uh, community. Any questions for Mr. Hickman? Okay, no questions? Yep, looks like we're good. Thank you. Thank you for the updates.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, Casey Abi, are you online?
Yes, I am, sure.
All right, Casey, you're always there for us.
Sure. You can see my screen here. Um, good evening, uh, and happy new year, Chair Verre and members of the Proceeding Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey Abi from the State DOT Highways Division. I'd like to thank Chair Verre for his December sixth email from a fellow resident expressing their concern about the fading uh pavement striping at Acacia Road intersection. Our Wauwau District Maintenance Crew has scheduled a restriping at the end of February, weather permitting. A report, um, a follow-up report in March meeting. Also want to thank Senator Alafonte for his January first email about overgrowth of vegetations on the Malka side coming in Highway Westbound between Juliana Road and Po'poni Street. The overgrowth had been removed and during my quick field trip today, I noticed our maintenance crew were re-wacking the median areas across Best Buy. Our maintenance crew should complete the cutting of all the overgrowth throughout the Pearl City area along Kamiaumia Highway by next week. Senator Alafonte also mentioned about a homeless encampment under H one viaduct. The homeless campment encampment was cleared on Tuesday, January ninth. Unfortunately, while doing my quick field check today, another homeless encampment returned since we have not repaired the chain link fence. For our homeless coroner, we are not able to perform any encampment cleanup operations until after the annual point in time count, which is starting this week. They will resume operation of encampment cleanup at the end of January or early February. I'll provide a follow-up report at next month's meeting. During my January fourth field investigation on Senator Alafonte's concern, I also noticed as you approached the Calumon Street intersection, there was another overgrowth of vegetation, homeless encapment and graffiti. Our maintenance crew cut the back the overgrowth and painted over the graffiti and the homeless encampment was removed. Also, I noticed the sitting county light standard at Calumon Street intersection needed to be placed, so we referred the concern to the city. During my quick field check today, I noticed to see we placed the base of the existing light standard. Thank you, uh, Director Albano. Following up on my November report where our Wauwau District Office removed some of the abandoned vehicles and equipment from our Pearl City Baseyard under the H one viaduct of Leahuua Avenue, I'm happy to report that all remaining abandoned vehicles and equipment were removed on Thursday, December seventh. Again, I want to thank Karen from Representative Takayama's office for emailing me this problem that was identified by a constituent. The state red light pilot program is scheduled to end in December of twenty twenty-four and upon completion, the program will become permanent. Therefore, all counties can establish their own red light program starting from January twenty twenty-five. So if the neighborhood boards want to install permanent red light cameras at the intersection of county roads, you can start reaching out to your elected county officials or the mayor's representative. As for state roads like Kamiaumia Highway, we would like the neighborhood boards to discuss or vote on which intersection they want the cameras to be installed and send a letter to our director requesting for red light cameras to be installed at those intersections. After receiving the board's letter, we will confirm uh the existing signalized intersection has or is scheduled to have a new adaptive traffic signal controller where the signal timing can be changed based on traffic demand. Signal, signalized intersections with the new adaptive traffic signal controllers cannot have a red light system installed. But if the intersection is not scheduled to have a new adaptive traffic signal controller, we will need to research the past traffic accidents at the intersection and see if other cost-effective traffic devices can be installed because the system can be costly. During the two-year pilot program, it costs the state approximately ninety-two thousand dollars per month for the ten intersections. Plus the cost of the police department to review each infraction and the cost of the state AG office to defend the program if the violator contested in court. As for income from the fines, we collected less than ninety-two thousand during the whole first year. Previously mentioned, uh, the red light cameras can also detect the speed of vehicles passing through an intersection. So people have been requesting if these cameras can be installed to issue speeding tickets. From our understanding, a bill is being introduced in this year's legislative session so neighborhood boards can contact the elected officials about supporting this bill. Also, from our understanding, the biggest challenge is setting the speed threshold where a ticket will be issued and how much will the fine be? Will the threshold be five, ten or fifteen miles over the posted speed limit before the system issues a citation? These are some of the concerns that need to be clarified in the legislative speeding bill. During the twenty twenty-three legislative session, the governor signed into law Senate Bill Five Eighty-eight related to excessive noise, which required the State DOT to develop and implement a pilot program to use noise detection traffic cameras to adjust excessive traffic noise in urban areas having a population greater than five hundred thousand people. H dot was provided two point five million dollars in funding to implement this pilot program and report its finding and recommendations, including any proposed legislations to the legislature no later than twenty days prior to the start of the twenty twenty-five session. I will provide additional information on this pilot program at future meetings. And finally, although this project is in the Pearl, is not in the Pearl City Neighborhood District I would like to inform the board about this two, this new two-year-long project because it may affect your travel time while driving at night into Honolulu from the west side. In December twenty-eight Star Bulletin, um, sorry, advertiser, our contractor Hawaiian Dredging and Construction Company placed this notice to Morris Ad about night work starting on January second twenty twenty-four and continuing into December twenty twenty-five for our one. for our one hundred million dollar H1 freeway eastbound improvement project from Ola Lane Overpass to Lekeliki Highway off-ramp. The newspaper notice had an error on the working hours on Sunday through Thursdays. For our December twenty nine news release, the working hours is from eight PM to four thirty AM and on Fridays and Saturdays from eight PM to seven AM. Two lanes will be closed each night. I will place the project website and HDOT's weekly road and lane closure links in the chat. The scope of work is to enhance safety and alleviate congestion at the Moana Loa H1 merge by widening the Makai side of the freeway to eliminate the center lane merge starting from the Ola Lane Overpass. This picture is the existing Ova Lane Overpass where the merge starts. This picture taken from the Ola Lane Overpass is where construction has already started. Currently, there are four existing through lanes. The project will add another lane that will be dedicated, the dedicated lane to the Lekeliki Highway off-ramp while maintaining the four existing through lanes. Where sufficient spaces available, a four foot median shoulder and right shoulder that varies between two to eight feet wide will be provided. This is a picture shows the existing shoulder that will be widened to add the dedicated lane to the Lekeliki off-ramp. The engineering and construction challenge will be at the Gulik Avenue Overpass where the overpass will be lengthened so five lanes can fit under the overpass. Besides lengthening the bridge, the clearance height of the overpass will be increased. In the past, we had incidents where large trucks hit the bottom of the bridge, requiring the DOT to temporarily shut down the freeway. To reconstruct the Gulik Avenue Overpass, the proposed plan is to proposed plan is is for the existing bridge to be completely removed for approximately six months and placed with a temporary bridge for bikes and pedestrian use only. During removal of the existing bridge and installation of a temporary bike and pedestrian bridge, the H1 freeway will be completely closed in both directions overnight. Once the dates for the full closure are set, HDOT will notify the public. This is a picture showing again the existing approach to the Lekeliki Highway off-ramp where the shoulder arrow will be widened. And the project ends at the Lekeliki off-ramp. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Hey, Casey, thank you. Very extensive update with all the state highway improvements that are coming up, which are all good, but they're going to be very painful. Just for the record, when it comes to the red light cameras, this board has already stated our requirements, our resolution and the exact intersections we want to start off with. So you have that documentation already. Board members, any other questions for Casey?
Casey, we saw a passing by going up to Waipio the other day. I noticed that the rock fall mitigation underneath the Farrington Highway overpass had been completed. So I was wondering when the rail off-ramp going from Farrington Highway and then doing a U-turn going back up is going to be open.
Can you, can you say that again?
Okay, if you're the rock fall mitigation underneath the overpass of Farrington Highway overpass on the H2 and the H, H, H1 split. They finished up that work over there and there's still a barricade where it's blocking the access to the rail from Farrington Highway right before you get to Liver Community College. You make that right over there and it whips you around and it goes back up the H2. So there was a turnaround that was built a while back. And it's right, as you get off of it, you'll come around and go by the Waona Street industrial area and then proceed on to the rail station over there by Sam's Club. I was wondering, you know, the rock fall mitigation, where they put, you know, where they concreteed the rock over there to prevent slides. I was wondering when that one is going to be opened up for use.
Okay, I have to go follow up on that and get back to you.
Okay. Okay, next meeting. Board members, any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Hey, Casey, I really appreciate you taking the time to drive through Pearl City and take a look at the issues to not only look into it, investigate it, but also to ensure that the projects or whatever the issues are get remedied. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dion. Okay, community, any questions for Casey Abbe? See you none right now, Casey. Thank you much and see you next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Senator Glenn Wakai. Any representative online? None? Okay, moving on. Senator Brandon Elefante. Welcome, sir.
Great evening, Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. Happy New Year to all of you and to the residents and those doing online. At this time, before I begin my report, I'd like to introduce and reintroduce my staff to you. So if you can come up, staff, that'd be great. So online we have is my office manager, Jan Salcedo. Jan, if you want to wave. You all know her. When you call the office, that's who you normally get. And then my legislative analyst is Michael Greenall right here. And then joining us this session is Taylor Sales. Taylor actually was my intern during my time at the city, so we're happy to have her. So if we can give them a warm welcome to Pearl City. So you have my written report. Thank you. You have my written report. I just want to follow up. Board Member Duran asked about vehicle safety inspections and violations from that, so we provided her an update on that via email this afternoon. But for the general public, the last two years, in twenty twenty two, two inspectors were suspended, zero stations and thirty two notice of violations. And then this recent year in twenty twenty three, zero inspectors were suspended and zero stations. And there were four notice of violations. She asked about used tires. Shops and residents can purchase used tires. In fact, there's a significant industry here in the islands for used tires. As for specific regulations, we shared her a link from the Department of Health. We couldn't find anything specifically in HRS that addresses the purchase of used tires. And again, we did forward that information to Vice Chair Duran. So thank you, Vice Chair Duran, for asking us those questions. I want to highlight a few things that Rep Takayama and I have been working diligently on in response to the Pearl City Neighborhood Board at some previous meetings as well as the community. For those of you who live in Palisades, thank you, Tom, for being here tonight. We have two bills as it relates to Palisades residents. We have a bill introduced on the Senate side as well as the House. I want to thank Representative Takayama for, you know, coming up with these ideas and working collaboratively with our office. The first one has a hearing this Friday. It's just Senate Bill twenty four forty four. Again, that's Senate Bill twenty four forty four. I did email the board on information on how to testify before the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs, and it has to do with adding another emergency siren up in Palisades because many of you have said that you are not able to hear the warning signs. And that's an appropriation for two hundred thousand dollars. So we welcome your testimony if you want to provide that. Secondly, this has been talked about over years, is looking at a secondary emergency access point other than Komo Mai Drive going up to Palisades. So we're requesting the Department of Transportation to do a study and report back to us. That hasn't been scheduled for a hearing. That was just introduced on the Senate side. I know Rep Takayama can give you more updates on the House side. And that Senate bill is twenty four forty five. And just to keep in mind, all the area senators from Pearl City, we worked collaboratively together and they all signed on to both of those measures. So I thank them for their support for that. And finally, you do have my written report, which is our newsletter. For those of you that have not gotten on, Jan will provide a link in the chat. We also have extra copies here on the table. It highlights bills that I'm introducing this session. Total, we have twenty five bills from our office that we'll be introducing this session. So we'll keep you informed and abreast as they come up for hearings and greatly appreciate your support and your advocacy in working with our office. And finally, I echo the comments from Secretary, Secretary Mesa and Mr. Abe. Thank you to Casey for his diligent work and working on the issues to improve traffic safety in the area. So mahalo again, Mr. Abe from DOT. With that, that concludes my reports and happy to take questions. Thank you.
Senator Elefante, thank you so much and those two bills that you and Representative Takayama are working on, very important. And I'm really happy to hear that you guys jumped on it right away. That's that's really fast turnaround. Board members, any questions for our senator? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Elefante, this is probably for Mr. Urbano, but I got a call from one of the city departments for road management. And I proposed to him about the intersection of Komo Mai and Waimana Home Road. So I kind of did it over the phone and I kind of explained to him, you know, what I had in mind because at any given time going into Palisades, Komo Mai, at the end of the day, there you got a lineup of about eighteen cars, twenty at a time. So I was proposing another lane, just just a little bit of a lane, a double lane turn similar to the one at Ka'onui at Pearl Ridge on Moana Loa. And I kind of, you know, explained it to him, what I thought, what he should do and the reasoning why. And hopefully, if you can get, but I'm sure that's for Mr. Urbano, you know, to take care of and but I'd like to see him, you know, he gave me the, not excuse, but the explanation was that we have to check the numbers. So I don't know what the numbers are, but I know the numbers are pretty good when inside there at the end of the day.
Yeah, so thank you, Board Member Wong. I believe Komo Mai Drive and Waimana Home Road is a city. And so the city's Department of Transportation Services would have to evaluate that. I'm not sure if Eric from Councilmember Okimoto's office is still on. Maybe you could. Yeah, maybe you could work with Board Member Wong and Mr. Urbano regarding that request.
Yeah, my pleasure. Board members, any other questions? Okay, Guy, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, this was for Board Member Wong. So let's see, so many years ago when Senator Elefante was a councilperson. And I had asked that when you have the left turn only coming up Waimana Home Road onto Komo Mai, that they should have a right turn signal only also because, you know, if you're making a left turn, there's nobody that can cross the crosswalk in either direction. And so I thought that, you know, if you're making a left turn from Komo Mai, Waimana Home Road onto Komo Mai, there should also be a similar right turn from Komo Mai onto Waimana Home Road Makai bound. And they told me that, well, there's not enough traffic to warrant that, but you know, like, like you mentioned, eighteen to twenty cars lined up, right? Well, you know what? You got, you got cars going down Komo Mai all the way to like a little bit above Children's House. That's a lot, a load of cars. And then you get these people, you know, tweeting the horse like that. So I was telling them that, you know, it's not just the safety for people like that, but you know, it's to curb the also prevalent road rage that we have nowadays, yeah? Road rage is pretty horrific, you know, as you can see. I mean, they start shooting each other for God's sake. What's still the green light?
Concerning that intersection, it would be a good idea if they allowed left. Instead of allowing or requiring a left arrow, have a sign, change it to yield. Yield on green so that if it's clear, you could make a left turn from Waimana Home Road onto, onto Komo Mai.
Yeah, I would just say perhaps as a suggestion, the board could come up with a resolution as well and direct the city to investigate with your recommendations.
Yeah, so Guy, let you and I work on this together.
Yeah, I agree. We should do that. As opposed to the the yield sign, they used to have that yield sign twenty some odd years ago. That didn't work out. It's, it'd be disastrous if they have now.
Okay, thank you. Community, any questions for our senator? See you none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Senator Henry Aquino. And welcome, our representative.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community. My name is Mathaniel Isay and I will be representing Senator Aquino today. Unfortunately, he's unable to make it today and I stand by my report. If you haven't grabbed a copy yet, please grab a copy and if you have any questions, do feel free to ask me that. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if we got any questions for you. Any questions for Senator Aquino? Community? See you none? You got off easy.
Mahalo.
Okay, moving on. Now we're in representatives. Representative Greg Takayama. And again, welcome, sir.
Hi, everyone. It's it's not too late to welcome you to a new year because as all of you know, Chinese New Year isn't until two weeks from now, okay? Year of the Dragon, the luckiest symbol in the whole Chinese zodiac. So it foretells twenty twenty four will be a year of positive action. So here goes. Thank you for Senator Elefante for highlighting a couple of the bills that, as he mentioned, we've worked on together. So I'll give you the House bill numbers for the two that he mentioned. New siren for Pacific Palisades is House Bill two zero one six. Two zero one six. And emergency road for Pacific Palisades is House Bill two zero one five. Chair Veray, earlier you mentioned the fact that Sunset Memorial Cemetery is a subject of legislation as well. We have bills introduced in the Senate and House side to enable a nonprofit citizens group like the Friends of Sunset Memorial Cemetery to have the authority to police the area, evict trespassers with the help of our police and also enact security measures. That bill is numbered House Bill twenty one ninety two. And as Senator Elefante mentioned, you know, our you can be proud of the fact that our Pearl City legislators all work as a team, very few competing eagles, none at all, I have to say. And you can talk to your other neighborhood boards because that's not true of many other communities throughout the Oahu. Finally, I just want to mention that one of the bills, the only bill that was enacted this past session on fireworks was one that created a fireworks interdiction, interdiction task force. So far, in the several months that it's been in existence, it's seized more than a hundred thousand pounds of illegal fireworks in shipping containers that they've seized at the harbor yards. A hun, more than a hundred thousand pounds of illegal, most of them aerial fireworks. I know this past New Years was, yeah, just as many fireworks as usual. But I have to say that I think that in the weeks since then, at least to my observation, there seems to be a little less of the, of the random bombs, you know, that shake all of us up in the middle of the night. And knock on wood, I hope that continues, but I think that might be an effect of the fireworks task force. So this coming session, I've introduced a measure to continue the task force and also actually give it more authority to inspect fireworks dealers for possible illegal shipments. So that concludes my report. You have a written copy version of it and I'll be happy to answer any question.
Reverend Zim Takayama, thank you very much for all your work, working with our other legislators and all this and continued to try to help us along with the nonprofit with Sunset Mobile Park. And in the area of fireworks, the reason why you didn't hear all those bombs because those teams lost lately before the playoffs. So wait for the Forty Niners. You're going to hear things go off.
Well, in a way, I hope so.
And and really, you know, this board has exhausted so much time on fireworks, you know, and and we're down to the point and this I really think that really the way it is, cut the head of the snake off before it gets to Los Angeles because that's where it's coming in. We probably had fifty containers come in. They got three, but the other fifty, you know what? I really like to know who is the number one guy to set the requirement for those fifty containers that's got all the big money. Who is that person in Hawaii? He's, that person is around. Be exposed soon. But thank you. And Board members, any questions? Hey. Nobody online? Okay. Okay, community? Hey, we're good, and uh, the other thing I want to offer to the board, if any of you need any assistance in drafting uh, any of your testimony, please seek me, I'll help you. We really need to support our legislators, let's be there for them. I don't know if I could be there in person, but I'll, I'll definitely get my, the writings in there. And as far as Year of the Dragon, just for you guys to know, once upon a time, I do have an alias. I used to be Larry Draggett until I was eight years old. So I know that dragon name. Okay, moving on, and we're going to Representative Cory Chun. All right, Cory.
Good New Year Chair, Board Members, Community Members, Cory Chun. State Rep for House District Thirty-Five. Um, just wanted to share, you know, Chair Verre, you know, you mentioned um, ski masks. So there's actually a bill this session to address ski masks. It's the House Bill Fifteen Seventy-Five. And it would actually prohibit people from wearing ski masks into what you, what you've mentioned. Uh, well, for the reason because criminals use ski masks. And we're in Hawaii and ski masks, you know, are not the most appropriate thing for our weather, so. We'll see, we'll see how that one goes. But I want to follow up on um, Casey's report because, you know, one of the things when I came into office was trying to, I kind of inherited the problem of the Kamakamea Highway Acacia Road uh, situation. That's, you know, been plaguing residents for, for years. And uh, there is that road that comes out of Pearl City Commercial Center that was supposed to be a connector road when the parking ride was supposed to be built for the rail station. Now you know, the real, um, first, the parking ride was not built, but there's still that infrastructure for that bypass road. And so how you would access that is uh, coming east of Kamakamea Highway, there's that H2 on ramp. If you take that on ramp, it'll actually lead you right in front of the uh, rail station. And so what was supposed to happen there was they were gonna make a inner uh, signal to be able to turn left onto Koalau Street to kind of avoid, you know, what's happening day to day. Uh, when it was originally proposed with the, I guess the, the parking ride, uh, the price tag was twenty million and it was supposed to be split ten million from Hart, ten million from the state. Obviously, since Hart is not going to build that uh, parking ride, it's, it's up to the state to uh, fit the bill. So right now, the price tag is, is the twenty million dollars to do that intersection and also improve that road to make sure it can handle the traffic and be safe enough for pedestrians to cross. So that's something I'm, I'm still looking into, maybe there's ways to bring that cost down. Um, but right now, that's currently where we're at with that situation. And then, you know, the legislative session just started, so I just wanted to highlight um, some of the bills that I'm hoping to pass this year. And one of the things I've been working on is a silver alert program with the Department of Law Enforcement. And what this silver alert program would do is similar to amber alert for missing children, but it's really for our kapuna, uh, folks with dementia and also with individuals with mental disabilities who sometimes go missing. And similar to with children, when adults who are, have dementia or cognitive disabilities get lost, the longer they're missing, the more likelihood that they can endanger themselves or become seriously injured. So that's something that I'm hoping to implement to just keep our kapuna safe and those folks who need uh, in their actual help being found. It would be a statewide program, uh, something that hopefully all the counties will buy into. Uh, the other bill that is kind of related to, you know, some of the issues that I've been hearing in the Pearl City area is dealing with um, gaming rooms. So I know the council has been doing their part to, you know, create liability and increase penalties for gaming rooms. But what I've found when talking with uh, law enforcement is just the difficulty in prosecuting these cases because we do have an exception for gambling, which is social gambling. Which means that, you know, if you are gambling at equal length, so everyone puts in the same amount of money, it's legal. So you know, like, we're betting on the super. What makes it illegal is when there's a house, when there's a actual, somebody who's taking a cut of all of that. So what I tried to do is think out of the box and be creative. So I have a bill, House Bill Two 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 Zero, which would negate that social gambling defense if you have too many um, noise and complaints and disturbances. So really, what, what that's trying to do is just tell folks, I'm not trying to shut down your poker night or your mahjong night, um, but I'm just saying, keep it down, uh, be respectful of your neighbors. And that way, it'll also help law enforcement to really go after the gaming rooms who are causing all the trouble and really making neighbors uh, scared to just be around these homes. So with that, uh, I'll, I have my report and everyone should have it, but I'll be open to questions.
Okay, Representative Chun, thank you, and uh, yes, we definitely need creative ideas to help us with the traffic there by Sam's Club that intersection. Uh, anything you can do to help out, that's great. Uh, and in the other area of uh, the gambling area, what I'm concerned about right now is I, I'm seeing too much advertising on TV for gambling online. And uh, you know, with your cell phones and it's just too much of that on TV. I'm worried about how that's gonna affect everybody socially. But uh, board members, any questions? Go ahead.
Um, going back to the one with the uh, the parking structure for the rip, so you know which one I'm talking about. That uh, access, um, make the loop for the ease. So it's, it's covered right now, are they ever gonna open it? I mean, even if uh, you don't make a, a left turn to go on Koala, you know, or Sam's Club by the Twin Towers, um, because it, it uh, it gives access actually to the Waipio and the Waipahu Rides to actually go to the rail station. Because it'll pull up right alongside it. It'll come from, it'll get off, take that off-ramp and it's a loop. Nothing has been built for like about five years already. So there's a lot of overgrowth over there. But I know they finished the, the rock mitigation under the freeway. So I was wondering if they was gonna open it up because if you live in Waipau or Waipio and you want to get onto that rail station, and you gotta go all the way to Akase and swing it back around. But if they open up that access, you can just loop it down. And what it might also do is keep the homeless element out of there, once they see traffic coming through. I know, you know which one I'm talking about. Now I know that you know which one I'm talking about. But that's good.
Any other questions? Any questions virtually for Representative Chun? Community? Okay, go ahead. Mike, come on up, get up to the mic because they gotta hear you.
So in regards to the kapuna amber alert that you mentioned earlier, how does that work exactly? And um, yeah, if, if it's like a nine-one-one number we call and report it? Or if you can get into a little bit of details about that?
So how, how it would work is the referrals would still come from the county police department. So you'd still call nine-one-one dispatch saying, you know, there's someone missing. Uh, the county, I guess the family member would confirm that that person has a cognitive disability. And then that nine-one-one call would then get routed to the Department of Law Enforcement. And they would issue, we're actually, how the legislation is written is they give them a lot of discretion. So depending on the severity, uh, they could go to the media and do a media alert. They could also use the, possibly give them authority to use the um, signage on the, the freeways. If, if, you know, if, if they're in a vehicle or something like that. And then I guess if, if they really want it, if it's a very serious case, they could use the um, it's called the emergency wireless alert. But I don't want to get a negative connotation, but it's basically what happened when, um, you know, we had the false missile alert where everyone got a text. So there's actually technology that could geolocate. So we could actually just send out text messages to everyone who lives in Pearl City to say, hey, could you be on a lookout for this person? Um, the one thing that is on the horizon, but there's a lot of legal issues with that yet, is actually using facial recognition detection because there's a growth of AI that could become a tool. But uh, because of, you know, sensitive uh, kind of privacy issues, um, we're not going that way yet.
Okay, uh, seeing no other questions, thank you Cory. And let us know when you're ready for that testimony for your bills. And, and welcome, Representative Lachica. Sorry I couldn't make your meeting, Ajia, I had a conflict that day.
Oh, you know, thank you.
I wanted to go.
Everybody, but can just attest to what my colleagues have shared, um, and all the neighbor, I just want to express my mahalo because every time I attend and, you know, attend these neighbor board meetings for Pearl City, I'm always just very impressed. I think it's a testament to how you manage and how you lead, um, and become the voice of your community. Um, just take a lot of really good action, um, very proactive and it's something that, you know, could be a really good model for other neighborhood boards, just wanted to reiterate that. Um, and please continue to give up the good work. Um, shared with you my newsletter, um, tomorrow's the final day for us to file bills. Um, so everything has just been moving pretty quickly. Um, one update, um, I'm happy to share is um, this year, um, I got appointed as the Vice Chair for the House Committee on Education. So I'm very eager to step into that role, um, and dive into a lot of the um, policies and issues that impact um, um, this space. Uh, there are some bills um, in, around education that I'd like to work on this year. Um, as you know, we have a couple of bills um, on access to school bus services and addressing the school bus driver shortage. So one of the bills, um, Senator Elafonte will be introducing the Senate companion on. Um, I'll share a full list of bills next month, but the two House bills for the two school bus issues will be House Bill Seventeen Sixty Seven, House Bill Seventeen Sixty Seven, and then House Bill Twenty Eighty Two, House Bill Twenty Eighty Two. So one of them would expand the, um, would allow us for the, expand the use of other alternatives. So the use of motor um, buses, motor coaches, um, vans, and then other types of vehicles to be operated for school bus services. Um, so it would be with the Department of Transportation and the DOE. And then the second bill is really kind of shifts the um, power of making decisions when to cut, cancel bus services to the community. So it's really establishing comprehensive standards so that before the DOE makes a decision, they involve the community. It establishes um, transparency and communication so that the community is involved before this happens. And then finally, it creates an appeal process, appeals process. So if a community feels that they were, you know, um, there's just no other means and it's an unfair, they're really at an unfair advantage and there's no other alternate route for the kids to get to school. It creates undue burden on the community that would get set that up. So um, I'm very excited to be working on those. Um, I have several other bills, housing, on kapuna staff, health. Um, but I'll be happy to share more, um, once we get all the bill numbers. And then I think that's pretty much it. Um, I cert, um, shared the results from my legislative survey. Um, we emailed out, we mailed out newsletters to the district um, the last couple of months. And then just um, a big um, issue, ongoing issue that we had had um, in the district was just a large homeless encampment that we had along Kipapa Gulch on Kamakamea Highway. So we worked with the um, US Army Garrison Hawaii over the course of several months as well as a homeless provider in the area at that time, Achieve Zero, um, which is now shut down. And our new homeless provider for Central Oahu, which includes this area, will be um, Kealaho West Oahu. Um, and for this project, I mean, for this um, cleanup, we were able to remove, um, and it was a vacant encampment already, but we removed nineteen tons of rubbish that was, had been left behind. So six truckloads um, at that time. And that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, and uh, uh, we're gonna do our best to be there to support you for your bills as you go through. Just have your staff give us a heads up and we'll be, we'll be able to respond in forty-eight hours. Okay, uh, board members, any questions for our representative? Any questions online? None? Community? Good to go.
Thank you, happy to hear.
Thank you, take care. Okay, Congressman Ed Case, is Nestor Garcia on? Hey, Nestor's not on. Okay, we're gonna move on to our state, city, federal government officials. Uh, Arlen Ledward, are you on for Border Water Supply?
Thank you, Chair Verre.
Okay, Arlen, you got it.
Uh, good evening, board members and Pearl City community. Arlen Ledward for Border Water Supply reporting. Uh, in December, there were three water main breaks in Pearl City. On the twenty-third, a twelve-inch main break near ninety-eight dash ten thirty-eight Kahumanu Street. On the twenty-fourth, eight-inch main break near four eighty-five Kamakamea Highway. On the twenty-eighth, eight-inch main break near seventeen twenty Hoolehua Street. Uh, general water announcement for this month. If you attended this past weekend's BIA show, you may have seen this promotional announcement. For a limited ninety-day period, the Border Water Supply is offering its customers a one hundred dollar rebate on water sense label toilets, which use one point two eight gallons per flush or less. These toilets can save up to thirteen thousand gallons of water per year and reduce water waste by twenty to sixty percent. This is more than double the usual rebate amount and is only offered for eligible toilets purchased between January nineteenth and April eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. This special rebate is limited to four per household and ten for commercial customers. If you need more information, please go to our website, borderwatersupply.com slash rebates. Uh, update for the Pearl City Water System Improvements Project Part Four. NAN Inc., the contractor, is working to install new water mains for this project in the following areas. Kuahaka Street, Ho'omoaana Street, Ho'o Hoi Hoi Street, uh, Palamoe Street, and Ho'o Malolo Street. The working hours are Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to three thirty PM. Three follow-up items from November. Um, Board Member Inoue, the final paving for the Ho'o Ma'e Ma'i Street water main break was completed December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, regarding Board Member Rodney Wong's question regarding alternative sources of water. Yes, Border Water Supply is considering alternative sources of water. We're developing a desalination plant in Kalailoa that will serve the Campbell Industrial Area. The desalination plant will gen, generate approximately one point seven million gallons of water daily, expendable to about five million gallons daily. The facility will be solar powered. And the project has been awarded and the contractor is starting planning and design. The Chair expressed general concern over a recently approved uh, sixty-four percent rate increase. Um, the Border Water Supply has not received any reimbursement for, from the federal government to recover the costs associated with Red Hill. We have recently filed a one point two billion dollar claim in federal court under the Federal Tort Claims Act to preserve our right to sue. The two-year statute of limitations was coming up. The Navy will have six months from the date of filing to respond to the claim. If denied, the BWS will look at its options. This includes potentially suing the Navy. If and when funds are received from the Navy, we will evaluate the impact on water rates moving forward. Please note that changes to rates fall under the purview of the Border Water Supply's Board of Directors. And that come, that concludes my report. I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, Arlen, thank you so much for uh, following up on the questions that came your way. And uh, and also the thanks to the Border Water Supply for fixing those water main breaks to Pearl City very quickly. Any questions, if further questions, board? Okay, no other questions? Community? See you none, Arlen? Thank you so much, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Moving on to Pearl City Library, Vicky, are you here? Vicky? Okay, she's not here, okay. Joint Base Pearl Harbor, we've got Mr. Victor Flint. And we also have uh, Mr. Duna Hodge. And we also have a Navy commander. Welcome, sir.
Stick to the plan. Hey, good evening, everybody, Happy New Year. Uh, thanks very much for the opportunity, Chair Verre, uh, to pass the water updates from the, from Red Hill. As of January the nineteenth, Joint Task Force has removed over twelve thousand gallons of residual fuel from the facility. of residual fuel from the facility. And now is in the process of opening all the low valves, low-point drains and the vent valves, one by one, to remove the majority of that residual fuel, which is about sixty thousand gallons. This part of the operation is expected to be completed by the end of March, and it marks the official beginning of the transition between the Joint Task Force and Navy Closure Task Force. So it will stand up at the end of March. Speaking of the Navy Closure Task Force, we reached our initial operational capability last week with a plank owner ceremony on Thursday. And the primary initiatives of that closure task force are going to be the removal of the four thousand gallons that'll be in the pipes, the last bit, ten miles of pipeline, removing all the sludge from the bottom of the tanks, and then cleaning those tanks to secure them. And all this is done while we're remediating the natural environment of the Red Hill site. So that's the goals of the, that's the duty of the Closure Task Force. The Joint Task Force and the Navy Closure Task Force are going to host an open house on February the seventh at Kahe Lagoon. I forget the name of the large center there, the Weinberg Hall. I apologize, I had some flyers printed up. I'll send them to you, Chair Vray, if you will make them available for the community on your website, we appreciate it. You can also get them from the Navy, the Joint Task Force website, some information there is on that phone app that everybody has. We welcome everyone to come on out. This is a chance to speak with leaders, get answers to some of your questions. And we'll also have these informational booths and tables around so you can get different information and different details on each one of the operations, the removing the sludge, what is sludge, how are the pipes going to be removed, those kinds of things. Lastly, the long-term monitoring, of course, still continues. You know that the tests are all available on the Safe Waters website, you can see your test results. So pass that to all your families that are watching that thing. And the next long-term monitoring booth is on Thursday, this Thursday, over the Hickam Exchange, from ten to one PM, there at the courtyard of the Hickam Exchange. On the Safe Waters website, they put a community calendar on there so you can see future information booth showings, like the one at Iroquois Point and those kind of places, so you can see the future was envisaged for better questions on your monitoring. With that, I'll turn it over to Commander BJ Sacramento as part of the Joint Task Force. I wanted to introduce him formally. He's been a big helper to us as we turn on the Navy Closure Task Force, so we appreciate him.
All right, well, welcome, sir, to Pearl City Neighborhood Board.
Aloha, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. Only three things. The Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board, according to Rachel Gilhuni, who's from our environmental section, the board has been postponed until further notice. Any questions? Come see me and I'll give you her contact. Not the middle man. The other thing. Dry Dock Five, I know there was some issues at the last meeting, yeah, Larry. Navy's going to have those folks come out here next month for a presentation to the board on the Dry Dock Five operations. Mike, a fast, another heavy thing, another heavy thing. The Miller family is coordinating with the Navy and Make-A-Wish Foundation. Their daughter is very, very sick. Amada. Anyway, all that young Miss Miller wants to do is visit the Navy ships and talk with the Navy sailors, so that the Navy is going to ensure young Miss Miller's wishes come true with that. Are there any questions for Duna, myself, or our brother BJ Sacramento from the Joint Task Force? Here to, we get questions, we get answers.
Okay, board members, any questions for the Navy? Anything on, okay, Guy?
Yeah, so I heard Board of Water Supply with their claim of one point two billion against, I guess, the Red Hill thing, so our fund's going to be appropriated to pay the bill.
Yeah, his question was, are funds going to be appropriated to reimburse Board of Water Supply?
Yeah, that's a policy, Guy, thank you for the question, it's a great question. That's a policy way above our pay grades, so these are things that are going to be decided by Washington D.C. folks. They're in discussions, they're talking about it, we can only hope for a good outcome.
Yeah, don't forget, Duna, I brought that up last month, yeah, so.
I thought I had passed you that answer, Guy, and if I hadn't, I'll make sure I get it back to Chair Vray and make sure I get it straight to you.
Yeah, just email it.
I will, I will, thank you.
Yeah, especially if you got the joint person right there, too. So I'm glad this is going to be off record.
Okay, and a question for the Rab, since Guy and Inoy is all ready to go with his leadership about, what is the reason for the delay?
Yeah, what happened was that day, the Rab was canceled, by the way.
Is it because of lack of leadership?
There was an issue with the other co-chair, so hopefully all that stuff can get worked out. Talk with Steve and Rachel. We want this thing to move forward, that's the bottom line. So whatever we need to do to work things out, we want them out.
Okay, good. It's in six lines, pull them past, just need to resurrect it and get the right people in there that have good ideas. That looks tough. So Commander, I'm trying to think of a question for you, but you came all the way out here for us. The only thing I could think of is, you know, with Dry Dock Five, the pile driving that went on and all that, that was an impact in Pearl City, Islands, intermediate school, all that, but it's over. You guys got the pilings in, you guys just start your building, I haven't heard anything since. But it's all good.
All that's going to be brought up next month by the people running it, so you can speak to them directly.
I mean, correspondence with them, it's because the captain couldn't make it this month, so it'll come next month. Okay, so no other questions, I'll let you guys go and thank you so much. All right?
Just a.
All right, moving on.
Brief comment.
Go ahead.
I think in terms of reimbursement.
Hey, one more thing.
Reimbursement of Board of Water Supply, that's something for our congressional delegation. So we should.
Should be with Ed Case's office.
Right, right, well, Ed Case and the senators, of course.
Okay, all right Chancellor, you're up and welcome. Still want to come eat at your cafeteria?
Want to make announcements about that. Aloha, everyone, Carlos Benyelosa, Chancellor, Leeward Community College. I'll be brief, just a couple of updates. We're celebrating the work up in enrollment this semester, we just started the semester in January, we're up at one and a half percent, so that's really good. Some of us are actually traveling to San Antonio in February to present. Leeward Community College is a top-ten finalist for a Bellwether Consortium Award on a Native Hawaiian professional development program that we developed. So we're really excited about that, we're going to present and hopefully we'll do really well. Being top-ten is already a really good recognition, it's a national award. I wanted to mention, like Chair Vray just mentioned, the Pearl is open, so we're starting as of January twenty-fourth. You could make reservations through OpenTable, it's already open, I'm confident that by the end of the week it'll sell out, but I did want to make mention of that. Or you could call eight oh eight four five five zero four seven five to make reservations. You may have heard in the media, we're celebrating a program that's on the non-credit side in partnership with the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. Leeward's offering CNA training through the high schools to high school seniors. It's being paid for by some federal and private dollars, and so the students aren't paying for it, but they're becoming CNAs while still in high school to help alleviate some of the shortage that we have in that space. If you haven't visited our Hoi Kea Art Gallery, it opened last year. We have a brand-new exhibit, and I just want to share that it's open to the public, it's free, we got free parking, you could take the rail, and we're open Saturdays, so please come and join us, it's an incredible exhibit. I will also mention, if you're, if you are connected with anyone from the college, we've suffered a couple of power outages related to some transformer failures on campus. We're dealing with some of it, we have a couple of generators on site, but we have had a couple of difficult power outages. And finally, March twenty-third and twenty-fourth is the next theater performance that we're having, it's called Indigenuity. It's celebrating culture and history through the arts. I'm only mentioning that because some of the performances that we've been having at the Leeward Theater have been extraordinary, so if you were able to join or even see what happened with the Robert Casemiro show, we're very proud of that show, it sold out two shows for the Leeward Theater, so that's very exciting. And so with that, I'll leave you all, because I know that you have more going on and it's really late at night, but I'm open to any questions.
All right Chancellor, thank you. We really appreciate you giving these updates, because, I mean, that's our college, we're in Pearl City, so, any questions? Go ahead.
Chancellor, hi. So recently I heard that Ibeloa is going to be instituting some kind of NASA space program with machining of tools and stuff like that in parts. I was wondering, because I'm on a little community machine program. Our, is Leeward Community College looking into something of.
So not necessarily duplication of what Honolulu already has, we're working through partnerships where there are needs, we're trying to offer programs on multiple campuses. So for example, my CNA program, we're offering it as far as Kawai CC. So not in machining, where we are evolving is in automation and robotics, so through integrated industrial technologies. Right now, we're actually building out a mobile van so that we could offer the programs with the tools and technology at the local high schools. But that's the space where we will be able to invest in that area.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I'm.
Just like, again, a brief comment. There's going to be a lot of work related to fiber optic cable installation. You know, we got some basic kind of physics and some, you know, hands-on skills, there's going to be, there's going to be a real labor shortage unless we act. Thank you.
Appreciate the comment, I took note of that, and we are working with university folks that are part of the broadband efforts, and so we'll work together with them.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you. All right, we're almost ready to wrap up here, we've got Heco with a, with a presentation to give us an update on the Wyal Repower Project. Michelle Chang and Janelle Aoki, are you online?
We are, Chair Vray.
Okay, over to you.
Thank you.
Aloha Chair Vray, Pearl City Neighborhood Board members, government officials, and community members. I'm Chanel Aoki, I'm a project developer with Hawaii Electric Company. Today with me I have Michelle Chang, she's a community relations specialist, and Grant Imamura, he's our generation project development director. So thank you for providing us this opportunity to share and introduce our proposed project to repower the Wyal Power Plant. At the end of the presentation, we'll take questions and also provide resources to contact us. Oh, okay, wait, sorry, I got to share my screen.
And you're sharing the screen, right? You're up.
Okay. Sorry, so this was the last slide. Okay. So in April of two thousand and twenty-three, Hawaii Electric issued a request for proposals to solicit variable dispatchable renewable generation and renewable firm capacity. On the variable side, this could be PV, wind, and energy storage facilities, which is basically a big battery. Renewable firm capacity is a resource that can be dispatched twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, utilizing a renewable fuel, which is what our project is. So the Wyal Repower Project was among seven projects selected across Oahu this past December. The next stage of energy procurement for this project is to obtain approval from the Public Utilities Commission, or PUC, of which community outreach and input is one of the key requirements. The Wyal Power Plant was initially commissioned in nineteen thirty-eight with Unit One, and Unit Two followed in nineteen forty-one, which you can see as a smaller building in the yesterday picture on the left. Can you folks see my mouse?
Yes.
All right, so these units operated for approximately forty years before being retired and converted into office space. Units three and four are shown as the next larger enclosed building, right here, and they were installed in the late forties. Units five and six followed in the early sixties and are located, they're right here. You see right here, next to three and four. They were installed in the early sixties, and seven and eight, which is on the far right, right here, came along in the late sixties. So all of these units, units three through eight, are still in operation today, and they range in age from fifty-six to seventy-seven years old. So these are the units that we are proposing to retire and repower with combustion turbines, utilizing existing equipment to the extent possible to maximize the value to our customers. And then note that the plant also has two combustion turbines, which is units nine and ten, and they'll remain in service and they're not affected by this project. So in this tomorrow picture below, it's a rendering of what our project, our proposed project is going to look like. You can see the turbine sitting on existing concrete pedestals that are already there, fronting the existing units. So the two units that are replacing three and four, right here, will reuse the existing interconnection into the forty-six KV substation, which is located within the plant. And then units, the four units that are replacing units five through eight, will utilize the existing interconnection into the one thirty-eight KV substation, which is also located within the plant. Okay, so why do we need this project? So reliable power available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that can be rapidly dispatched to support gaps in renewable resources such as solar and wind, or to provide additional support for our evening peak is essential to meet the island's energy needs. This project will also contribute to the state's RPS mandate of one hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand and forty-five. And the Wyal Power Plant location provides significant electrical infrastructure advantages. The plant is currently the closest firm generating station in operation to Honolulu's urban business district, major tourist hub of Waikiki, and in near proximity to Oahu's National Security Defense Center located at Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hittam. For these reasons, replacing existing steam generation with new flexible firm renewable generation is ideal for the island's energy reliability and resiliency to support all customers, major businesses, tourism, and security defense industries. So we've selected General Electric's LM six thousand PC Sprint combustion turbines as our units of choice for their high reliability factor and market dominance in the fifteen-megawatt space. They have over thirteen hundred units shipped worldwide. Combustion turbines are essentially the same as airplane jet engines and are fast-starting with ability to ramp to full load in under ten minutes. And the six units we are proposing to install will have an operational range of eleven megawatts to two hundred and fifty-three megawatts. The units are multi-fuel capable and can burn biodiesel, diesel, and potentially hydrogen if and when the fuel becomes technologically feasible in the future. The units can also provide blackstart capabilities to initiate restoration of the grid in the event of an island-wide blackout. That coupled with the company's existing blackstart capability at the Kahe Power Plant and Schofield Generating Station creates redundancies in the event of weather or equipment disturbances. So here you can see a side-by-side rendering of our proposed facility and our existing facility, right here. And as you can see, the visual impact is minimal compared to what the plant looks like today. So now let's move on to some of the community benefits. The project will provide if approved. The community benefits concept was pioneered in the early two thousands with the installation of CT One at our Campbell Industrial Park Power Plant. With the latest round of energy procurement, all developers are now required to include a community benefits package as a tangible means to invest and support the community in which the project is being cited. We began early outreach last year to better understand the needs and priorities here in Pearl City, and will continue to do ongoing community. and will continue to do ongoing community outreach to learn more. So we've defined the community benefits package for this project at three thousand dollars a megawatt, which equates to approximately one quarter to three quarters of a million dollars per year for the thirty years the project is planned to be in service. The variability of the amount is dependent upon the number of units that are installed, which will be predicated on approval by the Public Utilities Commission. Benefit selection and dispersment will be determined by a community advisory group. So during our early outreach efforts last year, um, an initial advisory group was formed. The members were identified based on their experience in community leadership. We anticipate that this group, um, will expand and contract as priorities of in, um, individuals change and new leaders emerge or current leaders retire. So since the project's in-service date is about five years from now, we also recognize that community concerns and needs may change in the future. And the advisory group can also use this time to decide if a third-party administrator should assist with the benefits dispersment. So we are targeting our PUC application filing in the first quarter of the year, and the process is anticipated to take about a year. If the project is approved and all relevant permits are obtained, the first two units are slated for in-service in twenty twenty-nine, with two more to follow in twenty thirty-one and the last two coming online in twenty thirty-three. So with this schedule, community benefits will be dispersed starting in twenty thirty. So thank you for allowing us to share our project. If you have any comments, questions or concerns, we'll take them now. Um, but you can also email pcdevelopment@hyelectric.com. We also have a mailing list, um, so if you wanna join that, also email this email address. Um, any comments that we receive by February fifteenth will be incorporated into our PUC application. Um, and then lastly, we have a project website that you can visit to learn more and also keep abreast of any future community meetings, which is hyelectric.com slash Wyal Repower. And I believe Michelle is also placing the same information into the chat.
Okay, well, Chanelle, thank you so much. That was, uh, quickly going through the project. Uh, enough to educate the board here to let them know that we've got, uh, good days ahead for the Wyal Power Plant. Uh, we also have our requirements on the books, as I brought up at the town hall meeting, that we need to look at hardening the infrastructure for Pearl City. Uh, we got a lot of tou- we got a lot of power lines that are above the houses, and we need to put everything underground. But Board members, any questions for, uh, Heko? Online, any questions? Can you see none, residents? Okay, Chanelle, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, Tony, anything for the BTS A?
Oh, yeah, we just had a rummage show on January twentieth, uh, this past Saturday, and we netted, uh, fifty-five hundred for BTS A and Project Red twenty-four. And for the PCC CA, uh, we have this coming up. Share it on the screen. Beagle Night for Board Member Installations is gonna be, uh, February third, twenty twenty-four, at the Prostate High School from eight to eleven. So if you're just there, you can RSVP to the PCC CA nine six seven eight two media at gmail dot com. That's it, Chair.
All right, Tony, thank you, and hopefully everybody get a chance to support the, the Pearl City Community Association Bingo Breakfast. Uh, treasures report, we have no money. Regular board meeting minutes. Uh, regular board meeting minutes approval, Vice Chair and I, uh, still uh, do not want to approve these minutes, uh, uh, if there are no objections, I want to defer these. The big issue is the mayor's, uh, the mayor's report is attached to our minutes. In all fairness, if his report's attached, all the legislators, there should be attached as well. Or we take the mayor's off and leave it at that, but, uh, I'll be discussing this with the NCO Executive Director. Okay, other than that, uh, any other announcements the board wanna make? I think we're all good, thank you all so much, I'm sorry, I'm fifteen minutes over. Um, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board twenty-one, next board meeting, will be a hybrid virtual and in-person right here at Momilani Community Center, uh, on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board meetings are broadcast on Focus Channel forty-nine and aired on second, uh, Saturday at six PM and on the first, third, Friday at one PM. Other than that, if there are no other things to bring up, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you all.
Thank you.